Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 17th meeting of the School Board of the Dover Area School District. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Present.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho. Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahausser?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. First category is our presentation category. Normally that is where Mr. Cherry gives us some reports. Mr. Cherry is not with us tonight. He is actually with his son this evening, who is being honored. So we left him have a night off to go be with family. So are there any other presentations that anybody else has to share this evening for us? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If there's anybody that has anything they'd like to comment on tonight, please come to the seats with the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing nobody moving, this could be a really quick meeting tonight. Boards Presidents Communication is our next category. We did have an executive session immediately following our Tuesday night meeting to address a student disciplinary matter. And then yesterday, we did not have an executive session, but we did have a very nice planning retreat with members of our administrative team here to discuss what do we want a Dover graduate to look like in the end when they walk across that stage, which will then allow us to build our goals and our actions plans from that. So you can see some of the work from the past day went to with our faculty and our admin team, and we had a lot of nice things happening with that. So that is all I have for my area. So we will get right into our reports tonight. Our first category is comprehensive planning with Mrs. Maylie.
Okay, we focused tonight on the climate, particularly the student climate in the buildings. At the elementary level, the intervention specialists in each building got together and redesigned a consistent elementary PBIS program so that it's kind of consistent across the board with all elementary schools. They talked about ongoing and daily reinforcement for their students, weekly reinforcements, monthly reinforcement, and quarterly reinforcement, and they are working on that and seeing success. At the intermediate school, some of their main goals for enhancing the positive climate, building a positive learning environment for students by focusing on positive reinforcement methods, enhancing building unity by including everyone in building activities, celebrate success by recognizing when students achieve, enhancing citizenship and service by participating in community service events, and teaching and modeling student expectations by using the PBIS lessons to deliver student expectations. And along with that, they are seeing that 90% of the student population has received no disciplinary action. Only 10% of the student population has received some kind of disciplinary action. So those are some pretty positive results at the intermediate school. At the high school, they are continuing with monthly student of the month recognition ceremonies. They have a student advisory committee to develop a student innovation plan, including a goal for culture and climate. And they are developing a quarterly reward and assembly for honor roll students in their building. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Maylie? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee with Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Herman.
Okay. We started the meeting with just looking at some of our old business and just got a quick update on our grading practices handbook committee. They had, if you remember, they had sent out a survey to the staff. Sixty-three responses were returned, and so the group sat with today and analyzed and started analyzing, looking over the responses with that. Some of the takeaways was even though we are as a district trying to get a cohesive grading practices from K to 12, it's getting pretty obvious that that may not be the best way to go about that. So they're looking at and they're going to continue their discussions and come back to us as they continue with that. So I appreciate that group of people for taking their time out to really work on that. And hopefully, I'm looking forward to have them come back with what they found. Next, we just basically had two presentations. The first was from Mrs. Strasbauer, and she presented a universal screener slash progress monitoring resource for our district. I'm not even going to try and tell you what it was about. What I'm going to do is probably at a later meeting of a full board, have her do a presentation of that. It is a recommendation that they'd like us to give them the okay. They'd like to have the okay to move forward with actually talking to the vendor with pricing and such. They feel that this one product that they reviewed will serve our district well. So hopefully, maybe in January, we can get her to come in and do that presentation. And then the second presentation was from Mr. Wassler at the high school, and he was looking over the course catalog for the -- he presented his thought process of how they were organizing the catalog this year, some of the changes that were made. So what, again, without trying to steal his thunder or try to explain what he did, I would ask the board if at our December meeting, that we could ask him to come and present that for us. He would like the board to approve that course catalog in January so they can start with the printing and getting everything organized so that by March, they can pretty much have -- he's not here, is he? Oh, my glasses down, I can see now. So you're saying March, that you'd really like to have everything?
In order for us to have a schedule built while we still have staff in the building to help us develop it and to have it done so the kids have a rough schedule by the end of the school year, we have to start building no later than the middle of March, if not March 1.
So again, so he'd like to have it approved by January, and like I said, I would like to have you have the opportunity to at least have a month to digest it and think about it for the or January meeting. So as far as the committee report, that's all we have. Kathy, anything that you want to add to that? Like I said, real quick, like I said, I don't want to take away from their thunder because I wouldn't be able to do justice to their presentations. So that's it on that. I do have an action item if you want to move on to that.
Are there any questions on that discussion before we go on to the action item at this point?
I was just thinking, thinking timeline. You mentioned about a presentation, give us time to think about it. We do not have a meeting in December, other than our
The reorganization, right.
Had the reorganization meeting.
Was hoping that we could, it was 15 minutes maybe for what his presentation was, so I was hoping that we could
Add that to the agenda for that night.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that and we're surprised. Okay.
Okay. If there's no other questions, you can move on to your action item for tonight.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the early graduation request of Christopher Patrick.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions on this? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko will have a vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else from Mr. Delauter or Mrs. Herman?
That's all I have. Mrs. Herman?
Okay, we'll move on then to our facilities report. That would be Mr. Emmig, Mr. Rahausser, and Mrs. Britton.
All right, the first item is the deployment of MacBooks. The laptops that are in front of you are out of date, and we would like to get MacBooks to replace these. But what we need to do is we need to have about an hour and a half to two hours of training, and so the board needs to come up with a date that we can do that. Okay? So think about that. Second item is, we talked about the ball fields, softball and baseball at the intermediate school. Mr. Nelson had gotten an estimate from a firm, and it would cost over $200,000 to do everything that needs to be done to get them ball fields in order. Now, the problem is, we're looking at possibly building, which why should we spend over $200,000 if we're going to build in that location? Plus, an RFP has to go out, and that bid could come in, or bids have to go out, and they could come back in a lot higher than what the estimate came in. So you can think about that. Cost and as far as the architects goes, we need to come up with, I guess, dates of when we're going to do interviews for those four architect firms. Along with that, we would need to, once we have the interviews, then the next step would be selecting which architect we would select. Then we would have to give them specifications on what we're looking at, which would be cost to renovate the intermediate school and the high school, plus the cost of a new high school. That way, we could compare what it would be to renovate both these buildings or to add a brand-new high school. So, but we need to come up with dates, again, when we can sit down and meet with the four architect firms. I gave to you in front of you the D-10 list that, and if you go over that list, you'll notice that there are some undergrounds, fuel oil tanks. Mr. Nelson said there's no issues with any of them. It's just that he wanted us to be aware that they are underground, they are at those locations, but there's no issues at the present time. Blinds have been installed in some of the buildings. If you go to the bottom of that, under the faculty facility-wide, you'll see that he would like to have a, he put on there that the D-10 of a bucket truck. We currently don't have one. Now, the bucket truck would be to replace light bulbs in the lights and throughout the buildings in the parking lots. And I think he had said it costs like $5,000 to
A year.
A year to get a bucket truck. And if you look at the D-10 list, a bucket truck he has here is, he's estimating roughly at $10,000. But that's just on the D-10 list. Also, two pickup trucks with plows on, lift gates. These are 18-year-old-plus vehicles, so we need to look at possibly replacing those. And on his dream list, he would like to have a large backhoe for snow removal, because if we get huge amounts of snow, it's tough to try and remove that snow. You need a backhoe so you can pick up the snow and pile it up so you can't see anything. So, but you can go over that, the D-10 request, and if you have any others, leave us know so we can put them on this list as well. But some of these items on here, it all depends on what we're planning to do as far as either renovating or building. Next item we talked about was the media center, which should be up and running after Thanksgiving. Mr. Benton, would you like to add anything else about the media center?
I would ask
Oh, Mr. Wassler.
I would like to add to that one. Our, the, everything has been constructed in there now. Our maintenance staff has been issuing their construction and pieces they have to patch up as we put some pieces back in place. The flooring's done, the paint's all done. Those who've been able to visit, I think you can see a real difference just from those two pieces alone. We are now repurposing the bookcases to make them more usable in the space. The furniture is delivered on December the 8th after school. It will hopefully be installed and ready to go the 9th. Our tentative plan is on the evening of December 12 at 6:00 p.m. If we get the furniture in, to have an open house for our community to come see the space and actually use it as our students are going to use it, so that they won't just be walking through, actually get to see how the kids are going to be using each part of that space. It would then open to our faculty, staff, and kids full-time the next morning. So we are about this close to a very long renovation process for that space.
Okay, all right. And the other item is, Mr. Benton had talked to us about a CTE grant that he applied for $50,000 to get a die-cut printer. However, he reported tonight that we were only awarded $12,541. So he had gone out and he is looking at a banner marker printer. Mr. Benton, would you like to add more to that?
Yeah, just like the banner that's hanging behind you, instead of doing that with vinyl lettering, the banner printer will actually do print. It'll actually put it along with ink versus vinyl lettering. It'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of 64 inches wide that we can do that with. It's roughly, the machine is around $20,000. It's on special until tomorrow for $5,000 off of that. Yeah, so the other thing is, I made a call to the company and said, this is what our grant's for, and I got word late this afternoon that they will give us the printer for the amount of the grant. That includes shipping, installing, and teacher training with that. So it's a pretty good deal. I think that's where we're at.
Thank you. The marquee, as far as the digital marquee, of course, same thing as goes before. We still need more funding or contributions to help fund that. So it's not off the table. We're still looking at that. And then Mrs. Britton had came up with that she had found the place that we could get a grant for a pipeline. So should we decide that we, to build a new building? As Mr. Nelson had stated, that the pipeline to a new building only comes to a certain point, and then we have to pay to get it to the building. So this grant that she had looked at possibly could do that, but we don't know what the circumstances are as far as how long will this grant last? How long will they go for, three years, four years? So it's just a possibility she had come up with. So she's going to send the information to Mr. Nelson, and he's going to check it out and see what we can come up with. So, so the only other thing I have is, we just need to come up with dates for training and for the architect firms' interviews. Mr. Rahausser or Mrs. Britton, anything else?
No, basically, everything's on hold until we get through A, B, and C as to what we're going to do next.
Yep, so that's where we are.
Any questions or comments for the committee?
I do. Okay. Now, what happens with the D-10? Now, you gave us all this, so do we have to vote on this?
No.
No.
All this is, is letting you know what is possibly we need to get done. But some of this, like I had said, it all depends on what we're going to do with the architect.
Right. That's what I think about the marquee too, because, yeah.
And that's on here. It's just, and if you have any other items that we need to add to this, you know, leave Mr. Nelson know, or the committee, and we can add that to this, but
So do we, is, what about removing the fuel tanks? Is that like something you have to do environmentally, or they're safe in the ground?
They're not leaky.
Well, then
They're not leaky.
Then why do you have it on here?
To let everybody be aware that we have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no, wait, don't go anywhere yet. I have one or two more. Oh, Dover Elementary, what's a one-touch studio?
Be like a TV studio for in the middle school, for like morning announcements, that's just saying like that, where you have to set up and literally walk through the door and flip a switch, the lights come on, the camera comes on, the microphones all come on, and you flip one switch.
But if you notice, there's no cost attached to that.
Oh, there isn't any. Oh, is this a freebie? Sorry, I missed that part.
I don't have a call.
Yeah, he don't have a call.
Oh, he doesn't, okay. And then what was the other thing? Oh, I know. What, we're talking about a pipeline?
Go ahead.
It's, I was going through grants at the state level, and anytime one says school district, it kind of just catches my attention. And what it is, it's offered through the natural gas companies. So if they are encouraging the development of natural gas and expansion, extension of natural gas, and a few weeks ago, Mr. Nelson had mentioned in our facilities, excuse me, committee meeting, that we are all natural gas. So if, in the event, I just kind of have this in our back pocket, for lack of better, you know, terms, that if we do move forward with a building project and there is some need for a natural, natural gas pipeline extension, that this would be a good resource for us to have, because I think the grant, I think I said what, it was up to $1 million?
Yeah.
So
I'm actually reading.
Okay, yeah, I sent it to, I sent it to Mr. Nelson, and he's aware of it. I just wanted everybody to be aware that, you know, if there are, like I said, I'm a nerd when it comes to finding, you know, funding anywhere I can, and if it says school district is eligible, it just catches my attention, so I just wanted to have that as a resource.
So the pipe comes down the street, but we have to pay to put into the pipe?
To get it to the building.
Okay.
Yeah, it only goes to a certain point.
So we, if we put it, if we put a new building in, okay, if we just use, let's say we just use the middle school, is the pipe already there? Do we put a new pipe in, or how does that work? I mean, if the building's already there, you already have a pipe running into the school.
No, this would be for a new building.
But if
Well
Yeah, okay.
But it's still there, the middle school area.
The pipeline's there, but the school's bigger and you have more
And you need more
Oh, okay.
You need more natural gas.
Or if you relocate and you have to extend that line 100 feet, even the business rights side, you have to go a little 100 feet, you have to go
Okay.
Plug your gas, what you're going to do, you have to put your gas, it only goes from the right-of-way 20 feet on your property, and they stop. Anything beyond 20 feet, you have to pay for it. But like here at this school, they came 20 feet off the road, and it doesn't seem like that far, but we had 150 feet of gas pipe.
And we had to pay for that, okay. Okay, and I just wanted to comment on something too. The blinds, I know it says about inability to show videos. Well, you know, I lived through that, and it was so disappointing when we'd get a good program in to the school, and they brought a wonderful video with them as part of the program, and you can't see it. It's totally bleached out. So there were a lot of times when there were resources available that we couldn't use just because it wasn't thought through to put blinds up there. So I know that when the building, Leickstown was first remodeled, renovated, some of the people got the lift and actually hung trash bags all over the blinds, all over the windows so that we could actually see the videos or whatever else was on the stage. And then we found out that then it wouldn't cover the warranty, so they had to take them back down. And it's such a, it's such a shame. I know it's so much money, and I know the PTO was looking into it too, but I don't know whatever happened with that, but just a real disappointment, you know? Okay, that's all.
Okay. I have several questions myself. First one is in regards to the potential building project. I forget what the plan con requirement was. There was a building, you must break ground by, when was that again? Do you remember?
It was, I don't remember the exact month, but it's 2019.
2019. I was just curious, you know, keep that in mind in making these decisions. The other questions that I have, are any of these D-10s items that would really be something we need to seriously consider in the short term? Thinking, I mean, some of these items that are on here pertain to winter maintenance, which, you know, are coming up, are these things something we should be thinking about sooner than later?
Oh, in regards to winter maintenance, I do have to say that last year, we spent, I think it was $27,000 on one storm. Now, we did get some of that back, I think 12, $12,000 back
Right, yeah.
Through a grant, or a disaster relief from the federal government. But, so, you know, it cost us a lot of money, and we did budget for, you know, some winter maintenance this year. But those kind of, the trucks and the bucket truck and things like that definitely would be helpful if you get a storm, but, you know, we don't have our crystal ball either to know when we're going to get snow, if we're going to get snow. So those, those things, you know, while, while they're important, you need to weigh the cost of contracting those services in the, in the winter or buying the equipment.
Well, I think the bucket truck would be to replace light bulbs in the parking lot lights, the high lights. So that would be a, we could use one of those. If you really want to get down to it, instead of paying $5,000 a year for one, you buy one for $10,000, and then you have it.
I'm sure you can find more reasons to have one.
Oh, yeah.
Just, you know.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering if there was anything on this list that, you know, we should really look at, as not, these are, these would be nice and kind of put them on the back burner. Are there any of them that are critical? I agree about the blinds in the schools, and I, you know, it seems like very disappointing when we did our facilities tour to see that a great facility like that has limited use because of the wind. To me, was it $10,000? That'd be money well spent, in my opinion, on, on the blinds. So I'd sooner look at that sooner than later if we could make that happen. Is that something that grants could be secured for? Is that possible? No?
I don't, I don't think we've, yeah, we haven't come across any for, you know, that we could get blinds for.
So that would be more of a donation, or we funded ourselves type, type of arrangement? Okay. The other question that I have is in regards to the number you threw out there for the renovation of the ball fields.
Yep.
Are there any less expensive options to improve the safety without spending that volume of money? I mean, that sounds like, that's a, that's a costly number. Is there anything that could be done? I remember when the parent came and shared about concern for safety. Is there anything that could be done somewhere in the interim? Because, you know, if we do build a building over there, those, those fields are all going to have to be part of that discussion, what happens with those.
What, they have an itemized listing of what each thing would cost, but if you do everything on this entire list, it would be over $200,000.
Is it, is it reasonable to think that you could do part of it to improve safety without doing the entire, kind of like putting a Band-Aid on it until we decide what we're doing with the building here, just to make
Well, they have here, if you just do the infield renovation for both fields, it's, they have $50,000 for baseball and $10,000 for softball.
And too, I think with that, we need to keep in mind the Title IX requirements. What you do for one, you have to do for the other.
So, yeah, there are certain items that you could just do, but if you redid the whole thing and bring it up to standard both fields, that's the total price it would be to do everything on this list.
Wow.
So, but this is just an estimate.
Okay.
And I think some of your real cost there is, you can't, you don't have luxury of staying in the room. We'll dig it up and level it out and plant grass seed, because you don't have time. It has to be sodded once you do it. If you dig it up now, you're going to make it grass to spring. If you dig it up in spring, you're not going to have anybody over the summer, and whether or not you get grass good enough to play on next year, is even a question for you. You, you're, you deal with that, so you know what I mean. Yeah, you might get grass, but the first time they run over, it's gone. So it has to be, almost has to be resodded when you do it. Probably wood sodding, I don't know about the square. It does have some real issues with alleys and holes and lips and
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our Human and Fiscal Resources Report with Mr. Cook.
We met this evening. Several items on our agenda this evening, had to make you aware of. Coming up in the month
Coming up, in the month of January, you'll be asked to vote on our tax collector contract for the next four years. Every four years, our tax collectors have a contract that lasts for every four years, and it runs in conjunction with every other year election, the off-year elections. We're required to have that passed by February fifteenth. So knowing that that's the case, we'll be looking to bring that to the full board for approval in January. To give you a little bit of history there, we're currently at a dollar sixty-four per tax bill that is being sent out. There are a couple of other numbers that, you know, we can share with you, will be shared with you, but we did some evaluation, Jen had done some research on where we are in comparison to other school districts of like size, in similar area here. And a couple of things that I'll point out to you is, we're, we're one of the lower schools as far as what we pay tax collectors to collect their taxes and, and submit them to the school district here. And it's really all over the place. If you do a cross-section of the, the districts, they range very high to very, very low. It really depends on the individual circumstances for each district, but as far as what is being recommended, recognizing, number one, that our district is lower than most others, I think an, an increase is definitely warranted. And the fact that we did remove real estate taxes from, you know, what we collect now also has impacted our tax collectors. So keeping all those things in mind, Jen had recommended a, an amount to come, and we talked about a number of different approaches. So she is going to put together some information that will help you to understand where other districts are, where our district is in relation to those other districts, look for that to come to you. And we're going to look at potentially a laddered approach over the next four years, something that starts out, and we'll, we'll work to get our district more comparable to other districts. So look for that information to come your way, and we'll have to approve that in January. So did I capture all that well enough? Okay. We also talked a little bit more about the unpaid time off policy, which we've been discussing the last several months. We're also in the process of merging our three, four, and five hundred series policies, which deal with some of those issues regarding that particular topic. And in light of that, it might be premature to try to make any changes or really readdress that right now. So we're going to table that for the moment till that process is complete, and then pick up the discussions at that point. Just so you know, the reason why we're talking about that is, it, it really, you know, in terms of making it difficult to get substitutes right now, unpaid time off can be a real problem that, that is dealt with on a day-to-day basis. So that's the reason we're looking at it, we're talking about it. Our district has done some things to try to limit its effect, but we're just continuing to look at that and see if, if there's anything more we need to do in terms of policy. Last item I have for you tonight is, we had received a request for some additional equipment in relation to the media center at the high school. We've received a request for some broadcast studio equipment, and that request will be coming to you as well in the month of October, or month of January to, to discuss and vote on. So with that having been said, that's, that's all we had for tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Cook?
Would that broadcast, broadcast equipment go on a D-10 list?
Okay, just asking. All right.
Any other questions?
Did you try asking Fox forty-three if maybe they'd have some money to give? I kind of went that route a little bit, but I think better coming from...
Actually, I was going to say, this is how many used equipment they were like giving to the chief.
Understand, yours donations may sometime, so...
Can I speak to that?
Certainly.
Right now, our broadcast equipment, we've been trying to do the morning now, so it's through the broadcast equipment. And the students have just met so many frustrating obstacles, they'll put hours into putting together a segment to air on Friday, and we push the button and things break down. Our equipment ranges from nineteen eighty-one to two thousand and fourteen, and trying to get it to talk to each other is very challenging. We've got all kinds of converters, adapters, and so on. And I did give Mr. Cherry a recommendation of equipment that would get us comparable to what some of the other school districts are doing. We can make it work. We've been making it work for the last five years, but it's very inconsistent and unreliable. So I put that recommendation to Mr. Cherry. I don't know if you shared the details of that.
Do you, do you have a, a approximate cost of what did, you would need to pay for this?
The, the base system, the one set kit that I saw was like around nineteen thousand for the entire system, but that, that's getting us, so that we can produce a high-quality output, that does not necessarily get it to the individual classroom.
The proposal, the recommendations that he put together are on the Human and Fiscal Resource Agenda, attached to that, so you can see that recommendation that he put together.
I did look at it, it's a switcher, right? So I thought, well, maybe if somebody from the district would contact Fox forty-three, they do make donations, I found out. So, you know, I think it might work. Maybe it wouldn't be for the whole thing, but maybe it'd be a beginning, you know, take a couple of kids out there for a tour, and then kind of like, give them your case.
I'm impressed that you still have equipment from nineteen eighty-one, because I wasn't even in the high school in nineteen eighty-one, and I'm old, I didn't get there till eighty-three. So I'm impressed. Duck tape on it, and you know, all that kind of good stuff.
It was dirty.
Oh, my goodness.
It's what we use to see what the cameras are sending us. So we, we made it work. For a long time.
A long time. Any other questions or comments? Board members. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category for the night. This is for other comments or observations from other board members. Does anybody have anything else to add tonight?
Yes, I have a comment. In October, the Pennsylvania Farm Bureau Association brought their Ag Band to North Salem. They put out a publication, and they put Dover School District on the front page of their publication, which goes out to forty or fifty thousand members, I don't know the exact number. And it's a nice write-up of how they're trying to get to all the counties in the state to expose agriculture to these kids. And they started out in two thousand and three with one lab, and now they have six in the state that travels throughout the state and exposing children to agriculture, because that's our number one industry in the state, and most all of us depend on agriculture every day.
Anything else?
Let's maybe go back to just our previous topic, just dawned on me right when you said, "No further questions." And I would, if, if Dave wouldn't mind, if you would expand on, you know, just hearing what that broadcast equipment is about. Basically, it's a piece of necessity to the district. Why wouldn't that qualify under D-10? What is it that, that you said it would be questionable?
Educational equipment doesn't fall under D-10. Like textbooks don't fall under D-10, computers, and like a lab wouldn't necessarily fall under a D-10. But if it's edu-, like curriculum, maybe I'm using the wrong term, curriculum-related, which we're talking about here, that's not a D-10, D-10 or more.
More of like a physical kind of thing?
Yeah, structured, yeah, more like, repurpose this, repaint this room.
It's a material of instruction.
Yeah, there you go. So that's why it would, you know...
Something like communication infrastructure, things like that?
It would, if you're talking PA system, or bell system, or Farovarm, or that kind of thing, then that's a, that could be a D-10.
With a network cable.
Network cable, it could be a D-10.
So that aspect.
That aspect could be a D-10. But you wouldn't necessarily break it out just because it's network cable, you need to keep it all together. If you, if you have to go out to bid, you can't break it, you have to keep it together. You can't take, say, okay, well, I want to, I want to, I want to outfit this room, it goes well beyond the bidding threshold, where you have to bid something, so I'm going to, I'm going to buy the tables from Walmart, I'm going to get the computers from Target, I'm going to get the chairs down here, Shiloh, whatever, and, and everything's going to fall less than that twenty-two thousand dollar mark. You can't do that. It has to all stay in D-10. But that's kind of why, does that make sense? And really, there's, when you start saying, well, why isn't it a D-10, it really doesn't matter. It's, you don't get anything extra for a D-10. Or... Just the format, I ask for.
Well, I guess, I guess if you, you know, used capital projects funds for, for D-10, which you could, correct? It would have to fall under the, the guidelines that those kind of improvements would require. And you're saying that would be questionable, whether or not you could make the case for that?
You probably could make the case that it is, the infrastructure.
Okay.
Probably could, but couldn't, you know, couldn't you still use cap reserve for a curriculum enhancement like this?
It's still...
You could use construction funds, but you probably could do a cap reserve. Jen can answer that question, she can answer it.
I mean, if you're putting together a studio, it's a capital project, it's, it's just, imagine if you were building a new building, you put the whole building in, you know, into the capital projects realm, where you, where you take the funds out of, out of that capital project fund. So whether it's a D-10 or not, doesn't mean we can't use capital projects funds for it.
Okay, got it.
To me, it's more of just paperwork.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll document the ask for.
Okay. I'm just kind of looking at our options of what, you know, how we might make that happen, and so on and so forth.
Also, I apologize, because I sat in on the wrong committee, I didn't realize that you were heading that committee. But if I could add a little bit, just to our situation, we, we put the announcements on, my, it's an extension of my class, I teach multimedia, it's the curriculum, but we use our, what we produce in class, we add to enhance the morning announcements. And we've asked, I've asked Mr. Wassler, we put that on hold so that we can, because things were just getting too glitchy, for lack of a better word, so that we could get our ducks in a row and get things working and solid on our end. And I'm at a place where I'm kind of on hold with the students to know what direction to push them, because how we format the show and what our capabilities are going to be used will be considered on what we get and what we put in for, we still have to, to do. In the meantime, Mr. Ryan Vaughn has offered to put together an air bell in the show, just to do, just strictly the announcements, until we can get things up and running. So that's where we are. We, we are, we're trying to get things shipshape and order, so that when we're back on air, we're doing it the best we're able to, and that it's reliable, and that will help teachers and students to get the information that they need, that that's our goal.
That's good.
Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to...
Working on it.
I have contact information for Fox forty-three.
Okay.
I'm on it. Working on it now. Not ignoring you.
I have a few friends at WGA, I'll twist their arms.
I just wanted to say something. I had the opportunity on Friday to visit the high school and the intermediate school, and I have always been a huge cheerleader for this district and for our students in here. And, and, you know, the administrators share with us some of the good things that are happening in this school, and so I, I've heard about some of the good things happening in our school. But if you have not had the opportunity to go in and look at our schools, and especially the high school, I'm more comfortable with the elementary schools, I know what's happening in the elementary schools. But the elementary, or the intermediate school and the high school, wow, just, there's some phenomenal things going on in our schools. First of all, Mr. Wassler, I walked in that, on Friday morning, and obviously, we, we had some, some things happening that morning, but that man was running around in like four different ways at a time, it's just incredible. Sat there for like a half hour till he actually had an opportunity to even say hi. But Mr. Benton, after like half hour, forty-five minutes, had asked if he could, could take me to some other place in the school, and walked into Mr. Lindberg's class to begin with, and I'm seeing our mini iPad, our Apple mini iPad, iPad minis, in different states of disassembly and reassembly. And, and our students are, in his class, are putting these, these inoperable computers back together, and, and they're, they're working. And then knowing that these students that take in this class are going to be getting certifications that they can go out in the field, and get a job based upon what they're, they're learning in our schools, and the interaction and the engagement that those students were in their class was just incredible to me. Mr. Smith's class, walked into there, some of the equipment that our students are working with is just unreal. I say, I, I gush, because I've always been a cheerleader, but to actually see that in there, and then even just walking through the hallways, and, and looking in the classrooms, and seeing the level of engagement of our, of our students in, in the classrooms, and with our teachers, just kudos to, to our teachers and our staff, I think, just amazing. And, and even at the intermediate school, I've been a very vocal about my concerns with the intermediate school. But what I saw over there was just, again, some incredible students, incredible teachers, the, the feeling of positivity back in that school that, that I felt was missing for several years. I, you can feel the positivity in that, in that school. Some good things are happening. So, again, I just think it goes back to our teachers that we have and our students, just, again, just incredible students, and to have the opportunity to get in our schools, I highly recommend you get in there and then look around and see what's going on. Just incredible.
So now I understand why the part of the counter at the high school main office was removed, so Mr. Wassler has a chance to spend less time going the whole way around, and he cuts through.
I got the opportunity yesterday to participate with Junior Achievement and their, their program to come into the high school and, and work to equip seniors with some financial thoughts, skills, processes, whatever you want to call it, just have some fun, fun times there and around finances, and learn how to build budgets, and, you know, learn how to be thinking about those kind of things as they prepare for graduation. And it was a great, great day. Nate and I participated, it was fun. Just like piggybacking on what you're saying, it is great to have the opportunity to come into the buildings and see what's going on, and see how the kids are working, and their, the respect that's there, and, and just to engage. So it's an opportunity I treasure and appreciate the invitation to be involved and get involved. In the afternoon, got to, to see a little bit of the Mansfield concert, those quite exemplary students from Mansfield came down, put on a show for our music students, and to see that happen, see some of the awe in the kids' faces, and, you know, it was just a, a really good environment. And then to go from there, to come back here, to be able to sit down with our administrators, and just to work through some topics... and just to work through some topics and take a look at what the Dover graduate, what we want that Dover graduate to look like down the road and to start engaging in some meaningful dialogue and plan ahead and strategize, it's invigorating as a board member to engage in that kind of, you know, opportunity. So thank you for those that, you know, orchestrate that, work hard to make that happen and you guys see a lot of that every day. We don't always get to see all that, but it's great to take, you know, to have the opportunity and be invited to come in and see that happening, just like Chuck said. There's a lot to boast about, there's a lot to be proud about, there's a lot to get excited about. And when you do, you do have that opportunity, it does recharge you and it's good, it's all good. So thank you for that. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Anybody else have anything tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to our final public comment category for the evening. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda, so if you'd like to state anything, please come to the seats with the microphones and state your name and address for the record. And I see nobody's moving, so we'll move on to our future meeting announcements. We do have our board reorganization meeting, which is Thursday, December 1st. That will occur at 7:00 PM at North Salem Elementary, not here, again, over at North Salem Elementary. We'll have a nice dinner prior to that meeting, so if you have not responded to Mr. Cherry, please let him know as to whether or not you will be attending the event that evening. If there's nothing else for the agenda tonight, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes? Yes? Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.